I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We will do our public hearing first of all. This is ordinance twenty-five dash zero one. It's Short Ridge Alley Vacation. Zach, do you want to give us just a little bit of background for the public hearing? If we take a motion-
I'll make a motion to open the public meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Vieta. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Good evening. The alley vacation shown on the screen here, which is just off of West Short Ridge Drive, is on the agenda for tonight to get vacated. It was brought to us by the homeowners to the west of the alley, and their concern was over excessive use of people driving through there that don't really need to be driving through there. And that's about the majority of it. They are looking to vacate it and possibly extend their driveway for extra parking also.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on twenty-five dash zero one?
I'll be glad to-
If you'll come up, just come up, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Greg Watkins. The address that is adjoining is two thirty-four West North. So it would be east and south of that alleyway. I maintain that paved alley up until where it meets the crossroad. It goes to dirt, and then it becomes very narrow, twisty, and it's unkept for sure. So traffic that goes through there is pretty crazy. Throw a lot of debris out. It's just not very well maintained.
Just for clarification, Short Ridge Drive is located right down here?
Yes.
Down Michigan?
Yes.
Okay.
Ireland, right?
So the ridge right there is heading north away from North Street, heading to Short Ridge, and then comes out over to the left to four twenty-one or Ireland. So anyway, yes, my piece is, yes, it's not a good alleyway. I can't imagine a fire truck or anything going through there. And I would love to see it closed.
Are there utilities in there?
Couldn't speak to that. No, there are no utilities.
Through all alley vacations, though, we do retain utility easements. Should they be there? Is there anyone else here from the public that would like to speak on this topic?
Hello, I'm Deborah Van Meter. The property in question is my property. Me and my husband are the ones that petitioned to have this closed. There is a lot of excess traffic. I've been wa- as I was watching my dog, I started walking around, watching the traffic. We had a, I noticed a lady from Ohio who repeatedly came through there, and she would stop at the apartment the gentleman who had just spoke had mentioned about. And I'm pretty sure there's some shady stuff going on there, but whatever. But we do get a lot of debris. There's a lot of trash. We get a lot of excess traffic. People go down there. They don't realize that it's not a through street, so they'll cut through the alley. People coming from the south, going up alongside our house, down Short Ridge, they just fly through there. I've cleaned up, I don't know how many beer bottles. At one point, my husband had found even a little, looked like a little tool set. It was full of hyper- thermite needles and stuff. We've found medicine bottles, you know, names are off of them and stuff. We just get so much trash and so much traffic, and they fly through there. And it's just become a concern. That's why we asked to have it closed. I was told if we did- we park a lot of times in our yard there also. So we was gonna use it for parking, I was told. If we did, it had to be paved, which I understand we're more than welcome to do. I'm not go- we're not gonna put anything permanent on there. We do, we will allow the neighbors access, you know. I understand there's gonna be times where maybe they're, you're working on Ireland or emergencies, whatever. I don't have a problem with that. We're just trying to get it blocked off, to get rid of this excess traffic that, like I said, I think is going back to the apartment building, and people that don't realize that it's not a through street. You get a lot of people walking through there also. They have been cutting through the property to the right of the screen that goes through to Michigan Street, and they'll just throw their trash in their properties and stuff. So they've had a big concern with it also.
Even if we close it, doesn't, it doesn't mean you're not gonna get any foot traffic. It's not something they're gonna be able to control.
Well, I understand the foot traffic. If I can, sorry, the screen up here. What we had thought about doing was just, there's a pole, pole here, and then our fence. We was just gonna put a chain across to it that just said private property, hoping that would keep some of them out. Maybe they, once they see that it's paved and there is actual vehicles parked in there in the meantime, maybe they won't think twice about it. Hopefully that they'll think, oh, well, they've changed this, you know. And I understand you're gonna get, it doesn't matter where you live, you're gonna get people that walk through your property. We get it walking through here. I found footprints the other day in the snow where they came-
Will that be posted, no through traffic?
I'm sorry?
Will that be posted as no through traffic?
Um, if I'm allowed to do that, or however I need to do it. And I was also curious if we did, I don't know how you go about it, like I said, this is the first meeting I've ever been to. Is there a way to get a sign put at the end of Short Ridge on Ireland that says Get In Street?
I would assume that there already is one, but is there not?
No, no, there is one.
Okay, I'll make a note, yeah.
No outlet or something?
Yeah, no outlet. I know that, what is it, Central beside us, there's no outlet, but I'm not sure if there's a sign there either.
And Rodney, to answer your question, once an alley is vacated, it returns to, it returns to the two property owners, the two adjacent property owners, they each own half of it. The city does retain an easement for any utilities that may be in there. But in terms of posting signage and stuff like that, it would be no different than any other private citizen that wanted to post, you know, post a sign that said, you know, no trespassing, private property, no through traffic, something like that. So they certainly could, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else for us? Is there anyone else from the public here to speak on this topic? Seeing none, would take a motion to close the public hearing?
To move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Vieta. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Are we okay with moving, can we move that topic up to the beginning of new business? Is that, okay. I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to move twenty-five dash one to the top of new business.
Second.
Jamie's made it, Daryl's seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, today is Tuesday, January fourteen, twenty twenty-five, the time being six thirty PM. This is meeting of Greensburg City Council is now called to order, the time being six forty. At this time, please turn on electronic devices. Anybody who'd please call the roll.
Jamie Kane?
Here.
Mark Harmon?
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood?
Rodney King?
Here.
Vieta McKenzie?
Here.
Daryl Polling?
Here.
And Daryl Tressler?
Here.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes from the public, the three public hearings for twenty-four dash twelve, twenty-four dash twenty-five, twenty-four dash twenty-six, and the December tenth regular meeting. If there are no additions, edits, or corrections to those, they will stand approved as presented. Seeing and hearing none, we will move to old business, to which there are none, so we will now move to new business, twenty-five dash oh one, which is the alley vacation. Does the council have any other questions or comments for our public safety teams? For Zach?
Yes, that was the question I was gonna ask, is our police chief and fire chief, if they have any concerns with us vacating that?
No, there was a recommendation to move forward with that through the traffic committee. Chief McNeely and I would not use that ever. It would be more harmful probably than not. And it doesn't really give us any room to do much. We still have to back in and out of our apparatus of that, of Short Ridge anyway. So this will actually probably make it clear, especially if you take steps to make it yours, that will kind of just eliminate any one of us, anybody from thinking that they could use it.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the alley vacation.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Daryl. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Do we need to, can we suspend the rules on that one? I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules on ordinance with the twenty twenty-five dash oh one.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Rodney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion that we pass twenty twenty-five dash oh one on the second reading.
Second.
Motion's made, Jamie, seconded by Rodney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, perfect. Vacation is complete. Amy will get the rest of the paperwork submitted, and then probably give us a few days, and then that should be in effect, to make sure we've got everything recorded.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Chief Stermer, you want to talk about ordinance twenty-five dash oh two?
I'm gonna yield my time to Director Wyer there to finish his topics, but-
Nah, we'll do them later.
Not so much. Yeah.
That's right. Good evening, council. Before you, as a memo on an oversight of mine and our department, when we were looking at the twenty twenty-five salary ordinance, the twenty twenty-five budget had supported an increase in Honda shift differential pay per shift, and that was not reflected in the salary ordinance, meaning that it cannot be paid until that it is. And so I come tonight to ask for an ordinance to amend the original salary ordinance and create for that fixing, as well as retroactively moving back to January one to pay those individuals starting in January one that did work those shifts. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made by Rodney, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
This is not one we can suspend the rules, right? Can we? It wasn't-
One thirty been budgeted.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules on twenty twenty-five dash two.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Daryl. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Make a motion, we pass twenty twenty-five dash oh two on the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Daryl. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Appreciate it, council. Thank you very much.
Okay, Chief McNeely, you want to talk about our CIT program?
Yes, I want to take up a bunch of your time, and I'm gonna invite up Sheriff Myros and Jail Commander Mike Eggleston in a minute, but I kinda wanna give brief you on how we got involved. Early last year, we got invited into a discussion that they were looking at starting a CIT program, which is a crisis intervention team. They're basing this off of Johnson County's, which is already up and going over there, has been for several years, and is very successful. Obviously, we said, yes, we want to be involved in this. This involves, at that point in time, it involved police officers getting training on identifying when somebody was in crisis, and then getting them the right resources. Since then, that has evolved to the point where there's now funding that is available to start an actual program that is self-sufficient at this point in time. So I'll invite Sheriff Myros, Jail Commander Mike Eggleston, and then Executive Director from the Decatur County Foundation is here. Tammy Wedding, if you have any questions for her.
Thank you, Mike. And thank you, council. So I'm sure most of you have heard, and I apologize for the repeat for those who were here at the first meeting, but recently, the Decatur County Foundation received a five million dollar grant. So I want to give you a little background on this, if I may. Back in March of twenty-three, Mike Eggleston, our jail commander, started looking into a program to develop for our department, a CIT program. And he was working closely with the Johnson County Sheriff, Dwayne Burgess, who has been very accommodating. His program is up and running, and it's really the gold standard for sheriff's departments in the CIT program. So he was working on developing a program for our department. We were looking at taking baby steps and funding it through our budgets, but we fell into a gift. So last February, I'm sure some of you saw where Tammy Wedding from the foundation was asking for ideas for a project to apply for this five million dollar grant. Her and Mike met up and discussed the CIT, and it was like a marriage made in heaven. So Mike was the primary architect of the grant submitted to Lilly for this five million dollar grant. It was submitted in September, and December, we were awarded the five million dollar grant. So this is really based on seeking help for those that have mental health issues, behavioral issues. Stubbornly, for me, it's about keeping people out of jail, keeping them out of criminal justice system, so they can provide services that they really need rather than being in jail or in court. So I'm not bringing Mike up, I'm gonna talk about the nuts and bolts of the program. It's a very vital program, and we're looking really forward to getting involved in it. This is more of information for you tonight. We anticipate this money's gonna last five, six, maybe seven years, because we can invest what we don't spend initially. So down the road, we're gonna look into partnership, if you will, with the city to help fund the people we hired to run this program. So Mike, why don't you come on up and kind of explain the program?
Crisis Intervention, Crisis Intervention Team is a unit that can deploy into the county and the city. Its primary focus is to create an atmosphere where mental health is brought to the forefront. Nationwide, about thirty to forty-five percent of the calls that come into the nine one one center have some type of aspect of mental health, whether it's someone in a true mental health crisis, or whether it is someone who, through self-medication of a mental health disease or disorder through alcohol or drugs, is in a situation where they need help. The team is specifically trained and designed to address those individuals, create an atmosphere where not only law enforcement, which by just nature of the design of the team is the face, but it encompasses much more than that. It is not a law enforcement program. What the team does is it enables all the first responders, whether they be dispatch, fire, EMS, or law enforcement, to work in an environment that is safe for them, as well as, and most importantly, safe for the individual who's in crisis. It gives the, all of that group, the training to identify those folks that can either have the team respond, or if it's a mental health, get a mental health person out there. It gives a frontline group the opportunity to address issues from the beginning and not from the end, when they're already in jail or they're in the ER. That, for many years, has been the dumping ground. Can't figure out anywhere else to put them, take them to jail. Can't figure out anywhere else to put them, take them to the ER. That drains resources from law enforcement, it drains resources from the medical professionals. When I started using these principles in mid-two thousand twenty-three, in two thousand twenty-two, we, in the jail, we had a hundred and twenty-eight use of force reports. In two thousand twenty-four, we had twenty-three. This works. It reduces risk down into officers, more importantly, it reduces risk to the general public. We get people the help that they need. We get them in the right direction that they need to be going. I would liken it to, no one would ask someone to wait until they hit stage four cancer before we start treating something. It's the same issue with mental health. Statistically, nationwide, twenty-four percent of the general public, whether diagnosed or not, suffers from some type of mental disease or disorder. If we look at the panel, if we look at the audience, we start counting people. I'll let you do the math on your own, okay? So, but that is what we're facing. What this team does is we create a community effort to bring the resources to the table to get people the help that they need before they're in crisis. And if they are in crisis, we get them, the folks that know how to deal with that crisis, to reduce the risk for everybody across the board, more importantly, that person who's in crisis. I'll be happy to take any questions or answer anything that you have.
Just sharing some of the comments from the Board of Works. I mean, I think we're in complete support of this, as I am personally. I think your efforts are awesome. Thank you, right? I think this is a great program, a great way to go about this, where we can trial this for five, six years, and make sure we're basically improving it as we go, and making tweaks and changes to improve it, make it better, to improve our community, and then determine and see the value, and then determine how do we fund it going forward. I think that's a great way to look at it. The partnership, I think that's the piece we've gotta understand, how do we, how do we work that partnership out? That's a piece I think we can work through, but I just, I know there was complete support from the Board of Works, and just want to appreciate everything all of you guys are doing to make this happen.
Yeah, I applaud everyone. You know, Lilly Endowment is just a fantastic, you know, organization in this state, and I know the Community Foundation has taken advantage of their generosity for years, and I applaud the partnership that you've put together. In the application process, were there budget numbers for each year that you put in, or was it just a total?
It was, so the grant itself is broken down into three main sections. One is for the CIT team, the establishment of the team, not only through personnel, but how it's, how it functions, equipment, training, things of that nature. The second section provided for some transportation that can be used in the county to get folks to appointments, or get them to pick up a prescription. I mean, the resources, some of them are there, they just can't get to them. Others, it can be improved through communication and through transportation. And then there is a third section that has some fill-in for additional team members, as well as some funding for projects throughout the community. So eventually, there will be a situation where folks can go through the Community Foundation to apply for portions of this grant, for things that will tie into the CIT philosophy and the team itself.
What is the foundation's role as far as accountability for the funds?
So they are the fiduciary officer for the funding. Each entity, whether it's Sheriff's Department, Police Department, Fire Department, whoever goes, will present their needs. Like I say, some of them are very specifically outlined, so that we can get the team up and running. Others will be presented to a committee for evaluation, and then brought to the board for suggested funding.
What kind of buy-in do you get from smaller units like Whiteland, Trapawger, Greenwood?
So with the Johnson County model, what the smaller teams get is the training, that recognition and the ability to put officers on the road that, at base level, have the ability to recognize this is a mental health problem, and I'm not good at it, and I know who to call, to an officer at the opposite end of that spectrum who understands, not only understands that that's what it is, but they have the ability to deal with that individual, either until they turn it over to CIT and allow them to go back to the road, or they know that CIT is coming, and they know how to de-escalate the situation until they get there. So in an ideal world, which is what you have in Johnson County, you have all of those folks that are, that are being trained every year by the unit of Johnson County, which is our vision here. But we not only want to train the units, we want to train all the first responders. We want to reach out to the schools. I really hope, when this is up and running, that some of you folks will come through the class.
Well, obviously, with the size of Johnson County and the number of units, if you're having success with them, it's a no-brainer for us to be a part of this.
Absolutely.
The members of your team, will they fall under jurisdiction of the Sheriff's Department, the city, combination?
So that is one of the things that we're letting the city and county attorney work out in an MOU. Short answer is, the principles for the team are international. CIT International and NAMI govern the team, how it's run, the standards in which they use, the education that follows. The, what we're talking about as far as, and I'll let Chris address this from an MOU standpoint, the basic day-to-day operation of the team, those have been established since nineteen eighty-six. So we're stepping into a well-established, well-created, well-documented, and we're, so we're not reinventing the wheel. We're taking a wheel that runs like a NASCAR wheel, and we're dropping it into Decatur County. As far as the interoperability between the two departments, that's something that we can do within MOU.
And to address that, so the county attorney, Chad Smith, and I have already started talking, because the sheriff presented this to the commissioners at their meeting on Monday, Monday, I believe. So he and I already started talking about how best to structure this for the cooperative nature of this, you know, of this program, through the CIT program. And because the foundation is still the fiduciary agent for at least the next foreseeable, you know, five to six years, we determined that it was probably more appropriate to do it as a memorandum of understanding, as opposed to in a local agreement. So we have started working through how to, how to create the framework of this, so that we're essentially utilizing this five to six years as a runway to iron out any bugs, iron out any issues that there may be, so that when we do get to the point where, you know, it's going to need to be funded by something other than this, than the Lilly Endowment grant, we already established that framework. So the intention, I believe, will be to create an MOU that specifically references the CIT standards, that specifically says this is what we're trying to do, but then gives still enough flexibility and mobility that we can, that we can tweak things without necessarily having to restart and throw the baby out with the bathwater. So I think that's the, that's the intention that he and I have kind of stated, and then obviously, this will all be transparent through the presentation and the creation of this thing. But so even, you know, something as simple as a discussion on job descriptions, making sure that those are mirrored, you know, and making sure that we've got consistency between the two, between the two overarching law enforcement agencies. So that's the intention.
Okay.
And did I, did I hear him say that the money that's not being used could be invested, so that money can grow and-
Right, it's gonna continue to earn some interest as, they gave us a million already.
If you don't mind, would you come on up and-
Thank you.
You got so close to avoiding.
So close.
Okay, so we were awarded the entire five million. They deployed one million in December. The remaining four million will come in June. We've gotten it, we don't have to jump through any more hoops to get it. However, that what we've got set out in the plan that we had submitted to them lays out some steps that were gonna take place, and we had laid it out over a two-to-three-year period to accomplish the things. They're not things you can do overnight. You can't train people overnight. But yes, the money can continue to earn interest while we're holding it, and five million earns some nice interest when it's being held. So anyway, yeah, it'll continue to earn, and eventually, we're gonna, like you said, we're gonna have a committee that will review requests from other entities in the community that might have something to do with a mental health program or something. And that committee will review it, and then make recommendations to our board. We kind of do that with volunteer fire departments now. We have money that they can apply for, but we want some people who understand, you know, we want the best bang for every buck we got. So I have refrained from standing up and speaking at the public meetings, because I don't shut up very easily. But this is a fantastic program, and it was during the process, we had a fifty thousand dollar planning grant, and I knew that the turnaround time was too quick, and I wasn't organized enough to do it myself. And I got HWC, which is the same group that we use with the ready stuff, and they called me and said, do you know who Mike Eggleston is? And I was like, no. Well, he's your jail commander, and he's doing his CIT program. And once I found out what he already had around the table, whether we received this five million or not, what he had started was awesome. At a minimum, you- At a minimum, you follow the CIT plans and you do what you can with what you have. You see what you don't have and you find out where your best, where your, you know, where to go. Where do I go for this help if I don't have it? But when you have funding to throw at it, you can kind of fast-track it. And it was amazing. If we hadn't won, we still had all these people coming around the table, finding out that our local elementary schools are already retraining teachers. It's not the same, I always say the wrong thing, trauma-based something or other, some kind of training. They weren't using the same format that CIT recommends, but they're doing it at the elementary school level now. They're doing, they're addressing things at the high school level. The courts are doing better, a better job at trying to keep kids who already have issues from getting kicked out of school back to where they learned how to have issues in the first place. So anyway, the whole thing is a wraparound thing. The officers are not going to be out there as an officer. They're going to be somebody who cares, who knows how to address the situation. And this funding, as it earns interest, it's a possibility that the Community Foundation, if this, you know, based upon the success, there's always more money to be had to keep something like this running. But what they're already doing, we're ready for sustainability. Lily will not just hand you out money and say, "Do something with it. When it's done, you're done." Sustainability-wise, Mike and the sheriff work together. They have a very good plan at incorporating the, the, like, the vehicles. They're going to build that into their budget over time, but right now, they can buy what they need and get it outfitted and be good to go because we now have money to throw at it. And that is more of an answer than you wanted.
That was a good answer.
Thank you.
To kind of put this in perspective and put this all in, right now, you have a team in Johnson County that is kind of the gold standard. That's what everybody goes by. But you also have a team in Bartholomew County, Jackson Jennings, Shelby, Rush. So we are kind of the missing piece in the giant regional circle. And by putting ourselves in that piece, it allows us to not only excel here in Decatur County, but if we're missing an aspect, we can reach out to another county. They can reach out to us. And we create a regional group that has a complete focus on this problem and, you know, the solutions that go with it.
These problems don't stop at the county line.
No, they don't. And unfortunately, sometimes they, I, I, my guests are often leaving Bartholomew and heading this way and vice versa. So, but you are, you are correct. It is, it's a, it's a nationwide problem. It's a worldwide problem for that matter.
Any other questions for Mike, Tammy, the sheriff, for the chief? It's a long process. Looking forward to working together on it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Thanks, Tammy, for being here. Okay, Amy, you want to talk about the 25 encumbrances?
Sure. I know last month, I talked a little bit about the possibility of bringing an updated list this month that would have something for the airport. The good news is, we got that invoice in. I got that paid before the end of December, so we didn't have to worry about that. There are a couple of changes. We were, we were able to work it out for the fire gear. That's a little bit higher than last time, just because when I saw the invoice, I saw the whole total. And between Chief Sturmer and I, we figured out how to get the total amount that way we had it to pay the entire invoice when we get it. And then Mark had a couple, Cluster Kemper had a couple of additional things that came in right at the end of the year that we were not going to be able to pay. They came after the December bills were paid, so it's just to pay that this time around. They are already in the system and were actually approved at the board for us meeting. So it's just to make sure that we're using those monies for that.
Do you just need a motion to approve? I'll make a motion that we approve the 2025 encumbrances as presented.
Second. Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Daryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
We're good. I'll fix it later.
Okay. The next, the next item is the uncleared checks from 2022. I know this is something you started a couple of years ago.
A couple of years ago. Yeah, so this is just, you know, last year it was 2021 checks. This year, it's the 2022 checks. There's an Indiana code that we can clear them as long as they're two years old. That's your list. I don't know. I don't know if anybody has any questions. There's not really much more. It's just to clear up the, the bank reconciliations. And we do, between Donna and I, we do keep this list in case a customer or former vendor or a current vendor, whatever, is on that list and they come back and say, "We want to be paid." We can recut the check. But this just clears up our bank reconciliations a little bit, so they're not all these outstanding checks.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Rodney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. And then a transfer resolution 25 dash zero two.
Yes, so we've talked a lot about the airport. This is a transfer from the Aviation Rotary Fuel Fund, which can only be, within that fund, can only be used to purchase fuel for the airport. There is an Indiana code that I have read multiple times. Bless you, Chris. I don't, I don't, like, I'm, it is so specific and vague at the same time. Just Indiana codes, they're very good at that. So for reaching out for a couple of, to a couple of other people, I think I have enough on this spreadsheet that I gave you to prove that we can transfer the $75,000 from the Aviation Rotary to the operation. Their purpose, the airport's purpose, is to, if not later this year, use it on to pay down the loan, then put it in their budget for next year to pay down the loan. There's also a possibility that we can make an additional transfer before the end of the year to put into the airport operations depending on. But I, I'm being very conservative in this move because I want to make sure that we have enough in the fund when more fuel needs to be purchased in their, in their busy season.
I'll make a motion, we pass resolution 2025 dash oh two.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Rodney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
And I have an update on the Fire Department 150th Anniversary Book. The sales have been great. I think the purchase of 200 is just about right. We have either dispersed or sold a total of 145 books. There were originally 30 that were going to be donated to retirees and, and some people who helped a lot with the books, the creation of the books. There are 55 that are still available for sale. There is one at the fire station and 54 in my office. So if anybody wants them, come and get them.
Missing out if you don't get one. It's an excellent work.
And Assistant Chief Winning has one more presentation, public presentation, January 20th at the library at 6:00 PM. I think that's the right time.
Close enough.
Okay. It's that night. I know it's that night, so.
Okay. Any questions for Amy? Okay, Zach, since Nate yielded the rest of your time to you. Update on Washington Street.
Our Washington Street project has suffered from the weather. It has slowed down a lot over the last two weeks, but they are still making improvements out there. We did Oprah and Monford Street and closed Jackson Intersection at the first of the year. So that's moving along as scheduled. They're getting stormwater done as they can, and they've been able to get to the structure in Jackson Street to get some as-bills to make sure that the new structure is going to work with the old pipes and new pipes. So the hopeful move-ahead goal for opening Jackson is sometime in March, and then we will be out into Broadway in April. Still done by the Fall Festival.
And the bus transportation with the First Baptist Church has been going well. They've been very good, willing partners, and we haven't had any issues with them, so.
Perfect.
Any questions for Zach? Okay, perfect. Thanks, Nate. Before we go into updates, I want to be sure that we, Mark, Mark had to leave, but many thanks to the Street Department team for their consistent and persistent efforts over the last week and a piece. That team's been very, very busy and has put in a lot of hours and done a lot of great work for us. And then in addition to our other public safety teams, our utility teams, that have all been very active since the cold snap and will continue to be. So many thanks to them for their continued dedication. Jamie, you want to give us an update from the board?
Chief McNeely came and we presented the CIT program, which you guys got to hear tonight. Also, Chief McNeely mentioned the purchase of a new K-9. Do you plan to have him here next month? Is what he said? Perfect.
We'll be into the Board of Works.
Into the Board of Works. There you go. And then Amy talked to us about the, the Fire Department book, which she mentioned tonight. Zach came and talked to us about old Fire Department proposals, of which there were none. So now we're regrouping on our steps forward for what we're going to do with that property. The, we approved Main Street Sewer SUE proposal. Zach, what was SUE again?
Subsurface Utility Investigator.
Okay.
Exploration, sorry.
Exploration, expert. I had the acronym and then I couldn't, it went blank. Sorry. Thank you. We approved Strand Associates, basically, agreement for Park Road, Phases One through Four with engineering for the sewer. And as Zach liked to put it, we were designing it backwards, so we're going to have to do a little bit of extra engineering to, to make that work as we do each phase. So, so there you go. And then we gave, Zach gave the Washington Street update that he just gave us as well.
Any questions for Jamie? Mark, how about Main Street?
Christmas decorations came down just before the weather hit, so we were thankful for that. And then we did receive word from Indiana Main Street Association that Greensburg will be hosting the Indiana Main Street Exchange. It's, Main Streets from all over the state will be coming into Greensburg to see how we do things.
I think that's going to be in the fall.
Yes, September, I believe.
It's, it's exciting.
Yes, it's, it's a feather in the cap for Ally and the team that's put that together.
To, to my knowledge, I think it's the first time we've ever hosted it. So it's definitely a great opportunity, and Ally and then the board's done a really good job with that. So many, many thanks to her, and I think she's going to have some more announcements that are coming over the next month or so that should continue to show the good work she's doing. Anything else? Okay. Plan commi, uh, let's see, Kevin, here we go. Economic Development?
We did not hold a meeting this month, but Executive Director Robbins did provide the board with his director's report. It's just some highlights from that. He gave us an update in this report on the Ready 2.0. And the projects that are on that list for Decatur County is the Learning Center, Child Care Project, and the old St. Mary's School renovation. Those were presented to the Indiana Economic Development Corp. So no, no decision or anything on that. That was the first pass of that. At the Indiana Economic Development Association Annual Meeting, one of the highlights that came out of that was, you know, the, the Jumping Bison thing that we talked about last month. They made a comment that the data centers are considered good wins for rural communities because of bringing the infrastructure in and the revenue there is without a heavy demand on existing labor force, because it doesn't create necessarily a whole lot of jobs, but you do develop a lot of new infrastructure. And speaking of that, the, the first funds were received by the Economic Development Corp from Jumping Bison to pay for the preliminary engineering. That was $800,000. So that engineering for water and wastewater infrastructure will get underway so that, that infrastructure project can be completed. So that's the highlights.
Rodney, 911 board?
Chief Sturmer, you directed that meeting for the first hour and a half. Could you put that in maybe a three-sentence synopsis?
Why don't you come on up? Because I think there was a little bit more in there than that, but.
Yeah. So the 911 board, we, we tackled a whole host of issues as we meet quarterly. So the meeting went long, I think, is what my esteemed friend Rodney, Dr. King, was trying to say. Couple things, Greensburg Fire is going to be splitting Station One and Station Two. Responses and response area up, so we're going to be dividing the city in half to, to respond with Engine Two, which is a rescue engine to calls that they can stand alone on their own. We'll be running a three-man or a three-person crew down there, as well as what we have at Station One. Major emergencies, we'll still get both stations. This is to give some autonomy to Station Two as well as Station One during the night. If that call comes out, there was a one-station response, it won't, we won't set the tones off for the entire station. So other departments have utilized this function before because it adds a tone and it changes some mapping. It's taken to the board to seek approval. We received a director's report, which we now have a new director, have had a new director in place. The efficiency report that was paid for out of statewide 911 funds was completed, and we have started to direct them to review, begin to review the SLPs, which are coming back very good and necessary for that type of agency and that type of department. And then we are going to, we have created a board with the mayor, Dr. King, Commissioner Winning, and Councilwoman Hungate to look at the interlocal agreement between this Decatur County and the City of Greensburg as far as dispatch operations, as well as financial responsibility for the dispatch center goes. Currently, the center most costs are split 50/50 on the, on the large umbrella, and then some of the small, minute costs are actually split four ways between the County Sheriff, the Dispatch Center, the Greensburg Police Department, and Greensburg Fire Department. So at the consultant's behest, as well as to clear up confusion with new commissioners, new council, I have a, we have a board together. Those volunteers were voluntold to make sure that that gets done to come back at our next quarterly meeting as well. We are still seeking hires for dispatch, so if you know anybody who wants to be a 911 telecommunicator, they can apply at Decatur County Communications through the county for that. We're about three positions short in trying to work on getting those positions filled. Other than that, I believe that was about it.
Thank you.
Am I missing anything?
Good enough.
All right. Appreciate it. That was almost as long as the regular meetings.
Easy.
Plan Commission didn't meet, right, Rodney?
We didn't.
Perfect. Okay. By the side of waste.
Just some postings that Stephanie had put out to, to update people. Your recycling was missed on the sixth or seventh. It'll be surfaced or serviced on the 21st. They also had to reschedule the mobile recycling. If anybody uses those in the other counties like St. Morris, New Point, Milhousen, January 18th, 8:00, 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM at St. Morris, 9:30 to 10:30 at New Point, 11:00 AM to 12 in Milhousen. If anybody uses those, county recycle, the, the mobile unit. If you had paid any attention to the county meeting, they were talking about the, he had made mention of the old city garage being turned over to solid waste. We are looking at a possible partnership with Solid Waste Two for a permanent site, but nothing's been, nothing's in stone.
I think the piece of that is if, how does the, important piece to the city council is the city retains control of it. It's just working on a partnership with Solid Waste that they can utilize the facility. We can protect our interest in the property, et cetera. So we're kind of working through that. It did go through the Property Committee that Rodney's on that from here and Daryl. So it was reviewed about, yeah, let's look at that. So we're working on putting some of the language together, and Solid Waste seems to be on board. It's not a terribly long-term commitment. Gives everybody the opportunity to get out of it if something comes up, so.
Maya, are you saying, excuse me, are you saying that recycle will commence next week on pickup?
Yeah. She had just, she had posted that if you were missed on the sixth or the seventh, it's not like they were going to come back and double back. They're going to be, those days will be on, will be picked up on the 21st.
And then your next service probably.
They're just putting you back on cycle.
Because the recycling's every other week. They, they sort of, they traditionally follow our same schedule, um, and when we were going to delay a day, they were going to delay a day, but then when we canceled two in a row and we had the issues with just access, they just can't, because they have the same problem we do, just the number of service points in the day.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anything else, Mya?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, redevelopment commission, Daryl?
We elected new officers for the redevelopment commission. Darren Burkhard is now president, uh, Ken Dornick, Mark Holster, Kim Burke is secretary. At the meeting, which was thirteen days ago, because the way the, just the way the calendar fell, so some of this information, uh, if you want to jump in there at any time you can, Zach. The, uh, Ironman apartment complex, the old jail site, uh, we were to have a meeting on the ninth. I did not make that meeting, conflicted with my work. Was there anything accomplished in that meeting?
That's like you come up. Meeting went very well, the Ironmen are pursuing tax credit.